Catskill, Camp Fimfo, Catskill, for site plan approval. If you could, just please stand up, state your name, please represent.
Hi, my name's Karen Libruto. I am a senior planner with La Bella Associates. I'm here representing the applicant, assigned communities of Northgate Resorts, and their application to the board for a site plan and special use permit and approval of Camp Fimfo Catskill. So I passed out a presentation earlier, and I think it might make sense to go through it again, given the number of people that are here from the public, and also given the spacing time since we were here last.
Are there comments from the public that's here?
So, not to interrupt, but when we publish the meeting minutes, we will put that on the website. There'll either be a link or a smaller PDF to be uploaded along with, like, how we have the agenda, previous meeting minutes. That will all be updated on the town website.
I just have a question. Is this a different presentation that was given two months ago?
You would have to ask a presenter.
It's slightly modified.
Slightly modified.
Yep.
Please continue with your presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so the site is located 3894 New York State Route 97. It's 230 acres. It's a campground that's been in place since the 1940s, commonly known as kit to titty. The zoning is split. Part of the site, about 30%, is hamlet commercial zoning. 70% is residential agricultural. There are currently 342 camp sites on the site. The campground is in operation through April and October. Most of the sites are occupied by tents. The max occupancy of those tents is 10 people. There are group tent sites which can accommodate up to 20 people. That's current conditions. There's also a zip line and a paint wall currently. There's a welcome center, which is basically the check-in, a camp store, an administration building, maintenance and storage areas, three bathhouses, two residences, and the Course River access. The proposed project is an improvement and modernization project. It would demolish the existing welcome center and rebuild a new welcome center in its place. It would demolish the two existing maintenance buildings.
I'm sorry, when you go through that, it'd be helpful. Can you say what the existing square foot is and then what the proposed, if you have that?
Well, I have that information. I certainly don't have it memorized, but I have that information on page three, and you can run across the row. So the adventure center is currently 3,600 or so square feet. It's being proposed to be replaced with a 4,000 square foot adventure center. I'm sorry, adventure center was the old name. It's now called the welcome center. I apologize for any confusion. Maintenance buildings, we've got two of them. One's 2,600 square feet, one 1,700 square feet, being replaced with a 5,600 square foot maintenance building. So they're also going to convert the camp store to food service, and there are improvements to the wells and septic on-site. In addition, there's a new mountain coaster planned, an aquatic area with pools and slides, and a mini golf area. The mountain coaster would be open to the public. The aquatic area would be open only to campsite users as well as the mini golf, only to campsite users. Page three gives you a diagram showing you the different campsite areas as they are located today and as they will be located in the future. The campground uses hundreds, 200s, 300s. That's how they organize their reservations. So for instance, I could rent campsite 101, and today I could be renting a tent site and bring nine of my friends. And in the future, I could be renting campsite 101 and be renting a Park Model RV and bring up to 10 of my, 10 people, sorry, nine people for a total of 10. So 10 today, 10 tomorrow. Okay, so page four gets a little into the campsite. So again, there's no new camp sites being proposed today. We have 342. In the future, we'll have 342. There are no changes to the camp sites that are west of Driver Road. Those are the 700s and 800s. There are 234 camp sites which will be equipped with water, sewer, and electric connections. 180 camp sites will continue to use bathhouses with new and upgraded electric and water connections, down from 188. So currently, most of the camp sites use the bathhouses. In the future, many more of them will be having their own water and sewer connections. The camp sites will feature new temporary recreational, sorry, Recreation Vehicle Industry Association acronym there is RVIA certified units, as is shown here on page four. And these are pictures from what's on-site today in the 900s, which is down by the river. These are called Park Model RVs, as in they are RVs, recreational vehicles. They have wooden skirting around them, but they are sitting on a chassis with wheels. They can be towed away using the hitch that's there in place at any moment's notice.
How many of those were, are proposed?
I don't have that detailed information, but I don't believe I'm meant to respond to public comments at this point.
No, no.
Okay, so continuing on. The pool and aquatic play area is proposed. If you're facing the site, it's proposed to the right of the welcome area. The pool's recirculation process is a closed loop and includes chlorinated water treatment. There's filters that operate on a staggered schedule to reduce backwash operations, thereby reducing water demand and wastewater generation. There's going to be a pool, a lagoon, a hot tub, and two slides, as proposed. A food truck pad, mechanical area and pump house, restrooms, and a deck. The area is located, sorry, the aquatic area is located partially in the floodplain area. So by law, new structures and mechanical infrastructure will have to have a lowest floor elevation at two feet above established base flood elevation. Again, the aquatic area is only open to camp users. The mountain coaster is a modular design. It runs with the contours of the land. It's approximately 15 feet high. And I would also like to mention that the slides in the aquatic area are also approximately 15 feet high. The height complies with zoning. The mountain coaster is open to the public. Based on what we know about ridership on the river, which is also open to the public currently today, we anticipate 80% of the rides for the mountain coaster will come from existing camp users. As access goes, there are three accesses proposed on the north side of New York State Route 97. One access on the south side of 97, and the existing access east of Beaver Brook is to remain. We will be removing two of the existing accesses, one on the north and one on the south. So in short, we're reducing the number of per cuts right there on 97. The boulevard is being improved. We call it the boulevard. It provides access to the main campground. It provides access to check-in. You have two roads going in. One provides a slip lane so that those that are checking in, taking their time, whatever it may be, others can go around. There is one lane out. There's a parking lot there, and another parking lot to the west. The existing roadways today are between 10 and 14 feet wide. The proposed roadways, meaning the same roadways, are going to be widened to 14 feet wide. There are one-way loops. We've worked it out so that there are one-way loops so that circulation is very clean and orderly. There are pull-offs approximately every 500 feet per best practices. And we've met with the fire department, gone through the site plan with them. They seem to be very happy with what we've presented so far. There will be pedestrian golf cart paths. The pedestrian paths are gravel. The golf cart path is concrete and gravel and other places. So page eight gives that building-by-building comparison. So in short, the buildings that are in place remain in place. The welcome center will be demolished and replaced with a welcome center. The two maintenance buildings will be demolished and replaced with a single maintenance building. The existing camp store will be converted to food and beverage. The zip line tower stays. Full barn use for storage stays. Two-story wood-framed building that's vacant will be demolished. So actually, we're reducing some of our impervious coverage. Two-story wood-framed building, which is a rental, will remain a rental. Garage demolished. Bathhouse, 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 bathhouse. Old camp check-in storage will be storage. Another bathhouse, that makes three, will be a bathhouse. An open-sided garage will be used, which is used for storage, will be used for storage. And the operations office will be the operations office. For water supply, we anticipate usage of 35,000 gallons. There are six Department of Health permitted wells on-site. There are two unregulated wells. There's due diligence underway to evaluate the system and determine design upgrades. We have some information into DOH, but we anticipate a full submittal with our treatment design in place in mid-August. And that would involve new 20-by-20 treatment buildings, which would be installed at each of the six well locations, larger storage tanks, chlorination, filtration, new lines of distribution pumps. Every site is proposed to have a water hookup or water available, and the mains would run with the roadway corridor. The proposed septic system would handle a load of approximately 29,000 gallons per day. It would be a gravity collection system to a central septic tank with pump station and a force main to an Elgin geotextile gas filter system. There are several of them planned.
How many do you think?
16.
16. This type of system provides a high level of treatment, more, a better treatment than a traditional beach liner absorption red system, and requires less square feet than a traditional system, thereby reducing impacts on natural resources such as cutting down trees or carving into slopes. The table on page 10 excludes other areas that are already using permanent systems. We have our flow confirmation data into the Department of Health, and it's under review. We've asked that they go ahead and forward application materials to DUC for the Speed East permit related to sanitary, and that needs to be referred on to the Delaware River Basin Commission, which is required. For stormwater, easiest to understand it, understanding upland and then riverside. So on the upland side, it's about handling the quantity and the quality of the stormwater. We're going to have several bio-retention areas using infiltration and underdrains. We anticipate doing infiltration testing on-site within the next couple of weeks. The aquatic center uses a swale to drain to bio-retention. They discharge through the Beaver Brook or the State Road 97 ditch, and we have to coordinate that with DOT, Department of Transportation, and then on to the Beaver Brook, sorry, first on to the canal and then on to Beaver Brook. On the riverside, there's four bio-retention areas proposed with a four-bait system for pretreatment that's removing, you know, bad stuff. And two include 20 to 25-foot wide grass filter strips with P gravel diaphragms also for pretreatment. Drain to the canal and on to Beaver Brook, and then three practices drain to the Delaware River, which is the fifth order stream. There are seven wetlands identified on the project site, which is approximately two acres. There are seven streams consisting of two perennial streams and five intermittent streams which are delineated. And we do not propose to alter or encourage on any of the aquatic resources with our design. Page 13 gives you the permits and approvals. As I mentioned before, we're in for a site plan and special use permit. Will also require a floodplain permit. The project review has to go in front of the Upper Delaware Council and National Park Service. We have our wastewater applications in front of DUC and DOH. We have our stormwater application, which will go in front of DUC. State Road 97 modifications with DOT. We've already interacted with them. They've seen the site plan. We've talked about it. They've not raised any concerns. We need a consultation with New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. We already have our Phase 1A, which is the desktop review. We are undertaking the Phase 1B, which is the digging-in-the-ground review, and anticipate submitting that to SHPO by probably the first or second week of August. We'll need compliance with Part 7, Subpart 7.3, which is the Department of Health's regulations for containment of campgrounds. We'll need the referral to the Sullivan County Department of Planning and Development. We need, sorry, the applicant is seeking a pilot from the Sullivan County Industrial Development Agency. And finally, we do need the review with Delaware River Basin Commission, as I mentioned. And so we're here today respectfully requesting that you schedule a public meeting, schedule a public hearing at your August meeting, that you circulate the application to county planning, and refer the application to the Upper Delaware Council.
Did you, Karen, did you have any kind of, you came before, you had like a large picture planned similar to what you have in these, in this handout? Just so the people in the audience know. You know, your description is great, but just so they can visualize.
We have a, we have a huge role set plans. What's on the board over there is the existing conditions. We'd be happy to unveil any plans. But it's not just one planned sheet because the size of the site, it's like broken into like nine or 10 sheets.
Okay.
I mean, we're happy to, you know, put them out. We can attach them to the board and.
I mean, the plans are, have also been submitted to the town so people could come into the town before the public hearing. If you schedule the public hearing, you review them at the town offices in detail.
Right, maybe there's a, maybe, I don't know if you have, not like a CAD file like you have, but like a.
PDF.
Like a, yeah, PDF, some kind of 3D rendering of some of the pictures of what you proposed that, you know, maybe we could put on when we publish the actual plans also on the town website, just so, you know, just so the public, like the people that are here tonight, that, you know, they can put what you've presented with the picture, you know? Might help, I think, the public get a grasp on what you're trying to put forward.
Just to clarify, are you looking for kind of an artist's rendering of what it would look like from standard guide and setting?
I think so, like even, even like, like this drawing you have here that shows, you know, like a, it's kind of like a drone picture, I guess, of, you know, the campgrounds, where your swimming pool's going to go.
Yeah, this is in the plan set. This is sheet 406 or 407 in the plan set.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not new information.
No, no, I know that. I didn't know if there was a way you could just, I didn't know if you had that here tonight.
We have it here tonight.
You're looking for a colored one.
You want a.
Something like that, you know, I mean, we have all these pictures here tonight that if, you know, they can see. Or we can put something just specific to one.
Why don't we get something together for you to look at?
That sounds great because it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit until we get it uploaded and the minutes and everything else.
It's not what you're looking for. We can always amend it.
Yeah.
Okay, so a colored site plan though, but not a 3D rendering?
I don't think it needs to be a 3D rendering. I just think that maybe before we have the public hearing that the public actually gets to see a big picture of what, what you want, rather than, you know, I look at blueprints every day for a living. I can read them, but, you know, other people want like an actual picture, you know? I, you know, it's.
Okay, so to me it sounds like.
I think it's fair to give to the, to the public.
Yeah, absolutely. We totally agree. We just want to make sure we understand. So I think what you're saying is that you don't want the traditional site plan, which is what we provide. What you want is a colored rendering of a site plan, much like what Katie Howard did, right? We understand now that that's not possible.
Just something that we can correct, yeah, anything like that. What the, what the roller coaster looks like, the, you know, the pool, the parking lots, I, you know, and I think that's helpful for everybody.
Yep.
Think that would be, that would be a positive thing.
Okay.
So, and try to help too, excuse me, chairman. COO2 is, it's got the camp sites on it. They're coordinated. They were labeled 100s and 200s and 300s, and this was up so the public could see it. And then it refers to what chairman's asking for as far as the coaster. Here's the coaster. It's labeled.
Let me ask you this. Can we somehow utilize this projector? I mean, can I send you the file and we can like run a PowerPoint? Because it, to be honest with you, it's very hard for people to see when they're sitting down a board that has that level of detail on it from 10 feet away.
I think maybe if you could do that for the public hearing, that would be good. But maybe we'll, we'll figure out, I'll, I'll make it a point to get that to work.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be great because then I can zoom in, you know?
Right.
It's more dynamic and we can really talk about things. But it'd be very hard for somebody sitting down to be able to see the site plan.
I'm trying to have you not create something new. You have a lot of material.
Yes, I agree.
Trying to have to work what you have.
Yep.
And that would probably be helpful too, before the public hearing, just so then we're not repetitive questions, I think.
Sure, we will get together what we can as soon as possible.
Okay, excellent. So as discussed in our May 25th meeting, you know, this is, this project does fall in the new River Corridor overlay district, which was adopted, when was that, April of 2021 by the town board. So the, a project, it doesn't matter really the size of the project, but this is a large-scale project. It does require additional oversight by the UDC, which is the Upper Delaware Council, if you're not familiar, and the National Park Service. Did bring the plans up to the UDC Monday. We followed up with a couple other pieces of information tonight. I don't think we're going to be able to schedule a public hearing in August. I believe it's going to have to be in September. Because the UDC gets 45 days, I have a whole schedule of how their meetings mesh together with our meetings. But regardless, part of this new zoning, you know, they have, it's stated in there that they have 45 days, which is also in this book, the Upper Delaware Scenic and Recreational River Project Review Workbook. So I don't think that we're going to be able to have a public hearing next month. It's going to have to be in September, which I think is good also, which, I mean, I know we're going to have a ton of questions. I know Ken's got a laundry list of questions. I'm sure there's going to be more because, you know, there's like 100 pages of plans. So I know, I know on the last part of your presentation, let's see if I can find it quick. Have you had to check this? Building and pillars and. Cause now I'm not going to find it, I just don't. No. Yeah, I don't know if I have, but I know you had a list of things on there. One was the 239 end to the county. That would be sent to them this week. The UDC has their plans already. So I believe everything on, that you had on your list will be taken care of except for public hearing, which again, will, I think, be scheduled in September. Let's see, you mentioned on the, let's go through that. You mentioned on the driveway. I did have an email back and forth with Jennifer Taylor. She said that about, she confirmed that you have, you're working on a permit for the driveway and that you were going to decrease the amount of entrances on to Route 97. I did ask her if the DOT actually went down there to visit the site. Will there be any kind of pedestrian improvements? Will a third lane be required? Also, one of the things that I have a concern with is not only the pedestrian traffic in front of Kinnitini now and going towards Luke's Landing, is 97 and 55. And right now, we have a lot of car traffic, but now having RVs and camper trailers, I think that could dramatically increase accidents. I mean, Paul, I mean, you can probably back me up on this. Last year, I want to say we had two or three a month in Berryville in that intersection one. So I asked, I asked those questions to the state. They didn't really seem that it was a concern, but they were going to look farther into it, and they CC'd Edmall and a couple other people. Edmall is the Region 9 civil engineer for this area. He's located on my side. Because, you know, they, they really haven't done any maintenance to that intersection since they built the Berryville Scholto Bridge. So it's a very tough intersection, but I think that not only your property outside that property is going to be affected. Another point, I had, I had a couple of people from the community asking about the Industrial Development Agency and their tax exemption. To be clear, that really doesn't have anything that falls on this board. That is a county-driven thing, if anybody remembers what happened with the Elgin Reserve. People concerned with that, I would, I would recommend calling Rob Doherty. He's the, he's the county, I know everybody laughs. He's the, he's the legislator. He's also the chairman, and he's the one who represents that district. We do have two residents from the town of Highland that sit on the IDA, Scott Smith and Carol Royd. I would also voice your concerns about that to them. Also, with all that being said, back in May, we talked about, there were some specific details with the septic that were missing. Some of them seem to be cleared up a little bit. I do have more that I just want to touch upon quick. Some, some of the septics, there doesn't seem to be any perk tests, deep pit tests. Your setback from the well requirements, if there, should be either 100 or 200 foot. I didn't, I seen that on a couple of them, not all of them. I'm also concerned with, with Elgin mats. They are great, they, you know, they take up less, less, less of an area. However, the mats themselves are three feet wide. Between laterals, you have to be six feet or seven feet on center if they're not a shallow trench system. Shallow trench means you need additional fill because the soil didn't have a good percolation. I can go on for a long time talking about septics, but none of that information was on there that I seen. And with the cross slope, you know, I'm familiar with Kinnitini that a lot of the area up there is on hill. And with, you know, getting that is, with the Elgin mats being so wide and you're on such a big cross slope, it's going to be tough to accomplish that. It looks good on paper, but that's just one of those things that, from doing them, doesn't work. Also, you have, there's a lot of sewer manholes. There's a lot of sewer piping. I've seen some of it going up to 12-inch pipe and go to septic tanks. I personally have never seen pipe that big go into a septic tank. Those, those pipes or those tanks were not pulled out for what size they are. The pump stations don't show how deep they are, horsepower. The pump is a big deal. The size of the force mains coming out is a big deal. The elevation from the sump of the, of the pump station to, or the, force main actually comes out and up to the field is also a big deal because that changes the sizing of the pump. I didn't see that on there. There didn't seem to be any contour lines for the septic field. I didn't see, so it was, it was kind of tough to see what cross slope was for the septic fields and, and the size of the fields. There's no area measurements. Also, some, you know, obviously, some of the, some of the slopes between manholes are pretty steep. Some of them I seen are up to 18% without drop manholes. You know, that's just me as an outsider looking in. I, you know, I didn't design it. It might be okay. I don't know, but I think that's definitely something to look at. Also, you mentioned that there were six, only six wells that are going to be used, and two were abandoned. I didn't see which two wells were going to be abandoned on the plan. I think I only counted five wells on the plan, actually, which that could be, maybe I missed them. I'm not sure. So we'll just go around the table quick, you know, again, and I'm not, I'm not trying to gang up on you and all of us gang up. It's constructive criticism, you know, even with, you know, an additional plan. This is just a couple days looking at the plans. You know, I know we're going to, you know, next month, maybe we can talk again of, you know, any, any comments that Ken comes up with. He's our, he's our consultant, engineering consultant from Keystone Associates. Probably, I didn't mention that before, but Ken reviews the plans fully. You know, we're just, you know, we're volunteers, but we're committed to doing a great job for the community. But some of the stuff revolve or requires calculations and stuff. But some of the stuff revolve, or requires calculations and stuff that we just don't, we don't do. So Ken, I don't know if you want to go first, just if you have any major comments that you wanted to give.
Could we just respond to your comments first?
Oh, yes.
And then we kind of go from there.
I know, it sounded like a large one.
No, no, I mean, listen, I, we appreciate that you spent so much time looking at it. I mean, that's, that's to inform the process and that's how we're going to get through the process.
Right.
So thank you for your time on that. The September public hearing, I guess I don't, maybe I just don't understand why the, why the UDC and National Park Service process, how that interrelates with your public hearing process. My understanding is that you all can schedule a public hearing at any time that you want. It doesn't matter at what stage of review the UDC and National Park Service are in.
Well, I mean, to be frank, I think that a lot of our comments are going to be bearing on the public hearing. Regardless, when the public hearing happens, it's not really going to enter, it's not really going to change anything because we still have to wait for the UDC comments. So I think their comments would be, would be great to hear before the public hearing.
I see.
You know, so I, I know your, your, your septic plan says that in the, one of the introductions here that it's at 70%, but I, I think it's, I think it's good that we have, you know, maybe a revised plan just for that, the wells.
Chairman Daniel Root, Palm Brown and Wyndham, in terms of Palm Project. Let me just ask you, isn't it possible that we can hold the public comment sessions? We can flush out some of the issues while we're waiting for the UDC comments and any approvals that are issued to be subject to dealing with any issues that are raised by the UDC? I think the concern for the camp is that this process will go on forever before we even get to the public comments and then we'll get another layer of review. Seems like we can do this a little bit.
Not to cut you off, but you have quite a few, you know, you have this UDC, then the Park Service. There's a, there's a whole list of meetings and really a public hearing when you schedule it. It's not really going to change the whole sequence. We went over that last meeting back in May of how many, you know, the schedule of meetings that we need to have, which is, it's outlined in that, the handbook from the UDC. So I, I think just, you know, obviously, I don't want to waste the public's time. And I think if we get all these com, you know, all our comments ironed out and the UDC's comments, you know, maybe the presentation is so, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to ask the public to come and give input, I want them to visualize, have all the, you know, they, they ask us questions, they ask you questions. I want to have all the right answers. And if, you know, I don't feel that the plans are up to date or up to good enough that, you know, they're 70%. If Ken has a series of questions, I, I think we need to get all that ironed out before a public hearing. You know, again, I don't think we can have a public hearing really whenever, but it's not going to change anything other than wasting the public's time. Believe it or not, I, I don't want to do that.
I certainly respect.
I think, I think it's, I think it's good for both parties, really. I, I don't see any, anything proactive of, of having it next month. So.
I think, certainly appreciate everything that you're saying. And I think not every aspect of this project is being viewed by all those agencies at the same time. And some of it, public can comment on that, we can get those comments out as well. We understand where they're coming from.
Right, but then we have to have two public comments because we're still waiting on DOT. We have the county, UDC, Park Service. There's a lot of, there's a lot of wheels on this one.
You know, I, I don't need to cut anything off, like that, Michael Taylor, returning to the table. I think the board is pretty adamant about the fact of not having the public hearing until September. So I, I think you can, you know, they're not cutting it off or anything like that. But this was discussed, we had a work session starting at 6:30 and the general consensus, as discussed by the board at that time, was that they wanted to see some more information and to give the UDC an opportunity and that they would not be scheduled until September. So I, I think that's the, pretty much the feeling of the board.
So is it positioned that it will be scheduled in September?
They're hopeful that at this August meeting, if everything is in order and their questions that come up now or may come up are resolved, that they're hopeful they'll be able to then schedule it for September.
And so just hopefully in working the process to make sure that we're giving you everything that you need. You think that tonight, you can flush out those issues so that we know exactly what it is you need from us? So we have time to get it to you for August, are we in a space to do that tonight?
Right, and I think, I think before our next meeting, you know, we'll have an updated, I don't want to speak out of turn, Ken, but I would think we'll have a great deal of information presented to you from, from Ken, you know, some feedback from the board on top of the stuff that I already mentioned. You know, so I, I think if everything goes okay and then we, we get positive feedback from the UDC, the DOT, the county, that we could do a public hearing in September. But obviously, you know, we still, we're still going to need some information before the next meeting, I think. Not a lot, but some, and it's important information and.
Let's continue that process. We would really like to understand what it is that you need. Obviously, ignore that, whatever, we don't have free tonight. Can we just write that down so we know what it is you need there?
Okay.
I just want to speak to your other comments quickly and I want to give everyone usually their time to speak. So with regard to DOT, I think it's important that you understand that they are requesting from us a commercial improvement application and we essentially just have to submit final plans. So we're not anticipating that we will have anything back from DOT within the next month or so. Essentially, we're going to set, submit to them final plans, workers' comp information, insurance information about the contractors, and they're going to review it and potentially issue the permit from what they've told me about pedestrian improvements. They want pet ahead signs, which is something that the campground would, you know, have made up and put in place per the requirements of DOT. So, but I, I, I definitely don't think that we're going to get anything back from DOT with rela, you know, with regard to actually grant them granting a highway work permit. That comes much farther down after site plan approval. In fact, they cannot grant the highway work permit until the secret determination is made.
No, I'm, I'm familiar with that. I just, I thought that they would be a little bit more involved and actually maybe have like a traffic study I asked them for or something like that because I just know that that's, I want that for my own information, but I think that's very, I think that's good information to give to the public.
Right.
I mean, we're asking a more traffic and it's on the state road and.
So let me speak to that briefly. So in our environmental assessment, we have included a trip generation which addresses potential traffic. We did not find that there were any significant adverse impacts. Again, you have 342 cameras today. The occupancy is between 10 and 20 people. And the, and, and something that also is important to bring up here is that all of these RV structures, the park models, they're going to be in place. They're not coming and going. They're going to be in place and they're replacing tent sites. Tent sites where three or four cars were coming with all their good friends. The park models are a single, you know, like a single unit. So like, they're not anticipating more than six to eight people in those units. Most people don't like to share that level of intimate space. They like, you know, they like having their own tents, but they're, you're not going to get that same number of people into one of those park models. So we're anticipating actually that traffic would be slightly less. So I'll leave it at that. It's in the environmental assessment and that information has been provided to DOT. So if they have issue with it, they certainly will be bringing it up. To date, and they have had our, they've had our information, they have not raised any issues. And finally, with regard to your septic comments, I'd like Jody Allen, our engineer from La Bella, to come up and speak to that.
So I listened to your comments. Just to give you some background, I am actually, I primarily only designed septic systems for the past 32 years around the Finger Lakes. I manage an entire program for Steben County. I personally designed and gone and done the inspections on like 4,000 septic systems. So I have a lot of experience on fitting septic systems on tight sites. I listened to your comments, but I did the soil testing there, so I'll provide you that information. I looked where each system's going to go. I looked at the slopes and even though the, like, if you walk the park and the campground, it is steep, there are steep slopes, but in these pockets, there's areas where there's plateaus. So I understand your comments, but we did really dive into that. And I typically, I mean, with these Elgin systems, I've designed hotels on those, wineries, breweries, all of the Finger Lakes, Cupid Lakes, Sun of the Lake, and I really stand behind them. And plus, the septic system design is going to be reviewed by both the Health Department and the UDC. So I, you know, and a lot of your comments, you know, I understand those and the drawings were 70%, so obviously we're, some of those details, we're going to vet out. But I just want to assure you that I'm not an engineer who doesn't design septic systems.
No, I understand, I just think it's not on the plan, that's all. And I'm sure you have the habit to calculate the length of the fields and stuff, but it's not on the.
Right, so the drawings in August will be, we're just making, you know, 100% complete as far as water and septic. We just got the testing back on the wells, so we are waiting for that. But, I mean, primarily for the past 32 years, this is what I do. Water systems, campgrounds, mobile home parks, septic systems, you know, for, for projects like this. So I just want to assure you that it has been thoroughly looked at.
So, you know, just as we're talking here, I'm looking at a very committed group of citizens who have a lot of questions about this project. They don't have all the information. And we're not expecting to solve every problem at the public hearing, but we need to get the public involved sooner rather than later because if we wrap this all up as a board and then present it to them and then we haven't addressed any of their issues, that's going to set us back as well. It's possible that we may need to do more than one public meeting. I'm seeing a lot of people who are willing to show up here to talk about this project. We want to hear from them sooner rather than later, so we can bake this all in. I know it seems like maybe we need to hold two of these meetings. The sooner that we can engage with the public with real information about the project, the sooner we're going to be able to make changes that are necessary. So I just want to put that out.
Another reason that we're not going to schedule a public hearing is that we're submitting 239M to the county tomorrow, okay? It takes 30 days. Now, in Southern County, historically, the response from the county comes in at 4:05 by the night of 30th day, okay?
Not kidding. No, no, that's a lawyer.
The board appreciates it. The board wants that 239M also as part of what they have and for you to have an opportunity to review it and for them, not an hour before the public hearing. It's another reason that it won't be scheduled until September. So just want you to know that also. Now, Ken, I think Ken has some.
So let, let Ken continue if he has any more questions and then we'll just hit around the board quick and.
So I think, thank you. I think in this format, I'll keep these questions in general. We had a very good Zoom meeting back in May. We flushed out a lot of issues. Those issues have been taken care of on the sort of plans that I've recently reviewed. But I think I'd like to make sure that everyone's aware that, just as, as Karen has said, the water in the sewer, I, I am going to review in generality. I'm going to look at the pumps, I'm going to look at the pump stations on the towns we have. But I also wanted to make sure that, you know, we know that the, the D C is going to be looking at that as well and I'd like to get their comments when we get those back.
Yes, of course.
I'm sure there's an engineering report that went in.
Yes, but it will be, and we'll be sure you're talking.
So all that stuff is coming in for me to review.
Yep.
And then I can get a comprehensive review, Chairman, for all the systems. I understand what they're doing, the, the concept is sound, and there's details, as you pointed out, that are, that are still not there, but they're heading in, heading in the right direction. One of the questions I had is, you mentioned the SWIP going through the D C. Now, is that just the NOI or are you going to actually ask them to review the SWIP? Because this, typically, they won't, right?
Right, I, I think maybe there's a little confusion around that. Yes, the D C is not going to review the SWIP. They're just going to get an NOI. We submit the SWIP to you all and we have submitted it to some other agencies just as an FYI, but we're anticipating comments to come from you and then we submit the NOI.
All right, that's what, that's what I thought. I want the board to know, so the stormwater stuff will all be reviewed by our office. And there, you're in the process of doing perk tests because you have some infiltration, doing infrastructure practices.
That's correct, infiltration testing within the next two weeks.
That's a good way to go, so hopefully you get some good perk results with that and that, that is the best way to go with that, okay? And none of those practices are within the floodplain, I didn't think, or didn't see?
I don't believe so.
Right, because that kind of messes things up if it does flood. Obviously, it takes away that ability.
Actually, I do believe we do have, we do have a practice in the floodplain over there by the water center.
Okay.
So we do, I mean, we are going to have cut in the floodplain and we're seeking to balance it. We have not done the cut and fill analysis yet, but I was just speaking with our engineers today about how we need to advance that work.
Okay, all right. One question I had is, we have some back end RV sites, right? Now, and maybe I've missed it, but some of those RV sites are within the 100-foot radius of wells. But then I saw that you abandoned a couple wells. Do we have any RV sites that are within the 100-foot radius of wells? And does the Health Department think that that's okay because RVs leak, right? They, they can.
I'm going to ask Jenny to speak to that.
Yeah.
And if, if we do, excuse me, if we do, that grain would be away from the well, I assume, and the wellhead would be up and I'm just trying to make sure there's no chance of a contamination issue, which the Department's also going to be looking at.
Right, so again, I will look at that specific issue because, you know, I would agree, we would have to address that. So I'll go look at that. The, again, the wells are all existing. They've been being used at the park, you know, for years. And so, but because of this project and the changes to the project, what the Health Department asked the owners to do is they actually had to treat each well almost as a brand-new well. So they had to do the full Part V testing, the extensive testing on it, and we had to do a well capacity analysis on all the wells and we will submit that data to you next time. There are some existing septic systems that are within that 100-foot radius of the wells. Those septic systems would be abandoned. So we're actually improving the situation. Because right now, which, you know, I can point those out to you, I can point those out in the engineering report if it makes your review easier. But in some cases, we have seepage pits within the 100-foot radius of an existing well. Those will be abandoned. And so I know for sure that none of the Elgin systems are within 100 feet of the well.
I didn't think so.
But I will look at the RVs too, just to make sure.
You mentioned you had soil testing you did for your general design. I saw on the table, I think some of the perk rates were 20 minutes. Is that about the average of what you had?
That's the worst one that we had. So actually, I think that the worst one, that's what I use for my application rate, just to be conservative and to sort of make the review of the design easier. The actual worst perk rate throughout the entire site, I think, was like 14 minutes. And I'll give you a map that shows where we did all the soil testing and my soil logs. But some of the, some of the perk rates were actually closer to like, you know, six minutes. And, but I sized the system as if there were 20 minutes, to be conservative.
Okay, all right. Very good, now I'll hold technical comments.
Okay, one of the things that you had mentioned was the setbacks some of the time.
Yeah, they have corrected that, I was mistaken, they have corrected that. That building that was over by the road is now pushed back.
That's correct, it's all of the setback.
Yep, yep, okay, thank you. So again, I anticipate we'll do, we'll do another Zoom meeting. I'll send you comments and then we're not taking so much time on some of the technical issues. The board will get a copy of my letter so they'll know.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you. And just, you know, the, we have no problem hanging for any time that you have on the norms. If you're sending comments to Ken, in the interim, just so we can sort of speed that process up. So we're not waiting. So we're not waiting until the next meeting to hear more of your analysis. Obviously, you have a lot of experience.
I can maybe give. No, I'm volunteer, I don't give anything. You're already a day for Ken to rest for him, so.
But if you wanna utilize him at ours, so that you can learn about some of these things a little quicker, happy to account for that. We're also happy to host anybody who wants a tour of the facility, that will help you visualize or understand what we're doing.
Excellent. One other thing that I had on my list here that I forgot to mention was, the campsites on the site plan don't specify which. It's for RV, there's a couple different sizes with different square footages. Follow-up question to that is, do the entire area get cleared? Okay.
Yes, so we're required to provide 1,500 square feet per the Department of Health requirements, and also per the town campground supplementary regs. And no, we're not anticipating clearing that whole 1,500 square feet. It would be some portion of it for the RV vehicles and picnic tables and that sort of thing, and of course, the utility connections. But no, we don't anticipate clearing the entire site there.
Okay. All right, so we'll just, like I said before, we'll just go around the board quick. There's, we've already brought up a tremendous amount of questions, there could be more. We'll start with Laura.
Sure. Could you clarify the height of the slides in the splash park for the aquatic play area? You said the slides would be an estimate of 15 feet, does that include the platform roof above the slide entrance?
So, first of all, I wanna clarify, it's not, it's not splash pad, that's a, it's a defined term with Department of Health, and I just, it's regulated differently, so just wanted to be clear with that.
Thank you.
On page six, I have an elevation of the concept right now. So what I can tell you is that the slides are 15 feet high. That peaked roof is like a treehouse structure that's 30 feet high. In the Dunning District, the maximum that's allowed is 35 feet. So they comply with zoning, and we don't need a variance.
Great, thank you. Second question I had is with the mountain coaster. Do you require variance from the zoning board approvals because of the 80 feet to 100 feet that it's supposed to be from dry rough roads?
No, we're not encroaching in the setback there. You know, in a past submission, we had some encroaching, but we were able to improve that condition. So we're not seeking any variance for that either.
You're up.
All right. So my questions are really around capacity. So your parking study talked about reservations last year, and you used that as the basis for some of your calculations. But what I don't really understand is, we know that there were all tent campsites previously and historically. I can't really tell, maybe I missed it, what it's going to be. Like, how many of each type of, I see the different type here. You have tents, and you have RV sites, and you have the structures on wheels. How many of each other are going to be? And really driving to, what is true capacity gonna be? So what has it been historically in terms of number of campers during the weekend, on weekends? And what do you think it's going to be? Because that really is the driver for how many, how many sites you need. You're clearly extending the sewer tremendously, right? And I assume you're doing that because you're gonna have more people. That impacts our conversations around traffic and what is needed there, parking, and the services that will support you through the county, right? All those considerations, and what I wanna understand is, I've read everything I couldn't find.
Okay, yes, I understand, we'd like to know exactly what structure types will be on each site. With respect to capacity and occupancy at this time, I, we do not anticipate that there's gonna be an increased density, but we will put that information in our documentation for you to see in the next submission to answer your question. I have another point. I lost it, sorry.
Hi, that's primarily what I'm concerned about, is making sure. I understand capacity, and I am surprised that the usage in the past, you believe that if the usage is gonna be the same or less than it's gonna be in the future?
That's correct, because if you look at the capacity of the tent sites today, they're 10 people. The capacity of these park model is 10 people. So if a tent is being replaced by a park model, it's the same capacity.
But did they use 10 people in the past? Like, people go with three people, with four people, depends. And my assumption is, if you have those structures that will support six or seven or eight people, or whatever it is, that you will likely have increased usage. That's just my general expectation.
I appreciate that, and we'll put together that information for you. I do wanna make a note on the increased sewerage. So it's important to note that the site has been operating with some waivers from the Department of Health. In fact, they have historically used porta-potties and these bathhouses. The site has to be upgraded in order to continue forward. And so bringing sewer, septic access to each of these sites is really a modernization that the state wants to see. And I'll let Jody speak to that.
Yeah, so that's exactly what I was gonna say. So, yeah, it's not so much that we're adding more people, but we're making it more convenient for them to, you know, use a restroom facility and maybe take a shower and do a couple dishes in the RV in the small sink. So it's, as Karen noted, currently, they have porta-potties throughout the site, and they have these, you know, these bathhouse facilities. But I mean, a lot of people today would prefer to be able to go into their, you know, RV, which will be a park model RV, it's not coming to and from the site, so it's parked and not creating traffic. But they can take a shower in there and maybe a little more privacy or something like that. So the water and sewer increase is because of the increased amenities, not necessarily because of an increase in people.
And do you know what, or have a projection of what the water and sewer usage was historically? Or, I mean, we know, you think it's gonna be in the future, but do you know what's been in the past?
Well, so in the past, they didn't really have meters on their water system, but from the Health Department standpoint, there's calculations that you have to use. So the D E C standards is 100 gallons per day per sewer and watered site, even if you don't use 100 gallons. That's what's required, so that's what we're providing. But traditionally, if somebody was staying at a tent, you know, they would probably use less if they went in and took a shower and used the bathroom a few times a day, or used a porta-potty that doesn't generate any wastewater. So we're designing everything in accordance with D E C standards, and that's what they require for a sewered site.
Okay.
Steve? Hi, Ken. So if you're doing it on these projections, and you've got 35,000 gallons of water coming in today, 29,000 gallons going out, if you get more sites, then what happens then?
Well, we're not, we're not proposing any additional campsites. So I mean, if we did bring on additional campsites, then yes, we'd have to improve the septic systems to be able to accommodate that, and we'd have to go through all of these same approvals.
So that's it.
Yes, 342 campsites is what they have today, 342 is what they proposed.
Can you speak to the difference? So there's, as you noted, there's a difference in what we're projecting for wastewater flows versus what we're projecting for water consumption. Part of that is because, you know, there are, at the tent, there'll still be tent sites available, and they have a water sticket available at the site. So there's some water that just, you know, if you, if you go to fill a water bottle or wash a pot or something, like it just goes onto the ground. And also, the aquatic center will have some water that just evaporates. You know, like people in the aquatic center, so they have to top off the aquatic center periodically. So I just wanted to make sure that we were conservative on our numbers. And so that's why the water use that we require is slightly higher to accommodate for these things.
Okay, Steve?
My questions are, back in April, I believe, we submitted an existing conditions plan, and it says, refer to property boundary information for all the survey by Millman. I don't recall seeing that, it was the actual survey, the all the survey, that should show floodway for the plane, what's in, what's out.
I think we submitted way back, but we'll, I can send it tomorrow.
Yeah, I never received a copy of that, so I drew a blank, copied that. The roller coaster, are there any roller coasters anywhere around that we could maybe go visit? Kind of see what, because when you say roller coaster, people have been, you know, skyscraper, people flying. Obviously, it's not that, it's more of like a luge-type thing.
And not to jump in either, but I think that's gonna be one of the things that would help the public and the board. Like you mentioned before.
My name is Brian Jenkin from Northgate. There's a mountain coaster Camelback Resort in the Poconos, and also Mountain Creek, New Jersey, Vernon Valley, closest to here. One also at Jimmy Peak Resort in Perk Chirs in Massachusetts. So we can get videos of those, and I think that'd be great.
And because I was also curious, you can actually just Google "mountain coaster", and you'll see those videos. And it's called a mountain coaster because it rides the curves of the hill, the contours. It's 15 feet high, so it's not your traditional roller coaster. Yeah.
Most of my questions were already answered, so I guess that's really about it. Who would we contact? I think a site visit would be beneficial to kind of grasp exactly what's going on.
Absolutely. Scott Campbell is the project manager on the Northgate Sign Community site. He's been copied down all interactions with the town. But honestly, you can contact me, anyone I make these emails, and I know that the campground would be happy to welcome everyone to come and visit.
If we don't have a site visit, if you can, you're gonna have to, if we're gonna go, you're gonna go as a board. You're gonna have to.
Schedule it.
Schedule it.
Have to.
Sure.
Meet in.
We did that, we did that with the compressor station.
Yeah. You have to schedule it as a meeting, if you go with the board, if the whole board goes, or if the jury goes. So it would be.
Would you like some dates from us?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. And then I think what I'll do is, we'll see what dates are good with you. I will send out an email to the members of the board, maybe we'll break up.
I think we should do at the end of this meeting, that is just recess this meeting to a subsequent date, because we're talking about trying to have, I assume we're talking about having the site visited before the oldest meeting?
I think that would be, yeah, that's a good idea, because we wanna get your comments.
Yeah, so then I think they should just recess it, and then they can schedule it for whenever, if we can agree on a date.
Maybe we can all talk actually before we leave tonight about dates, so that we can get that information.
That sounds good.
Jeff?
All right. I also think it's important to get the number of expected guests, what you have now, what you expect to have. And also, again, I don't know if I saw it or not, but actually, this is all for, to have for the public hearing, the things to discuss with the public. An actual breakdown of the staffing, specifically the titles. I'm very curious about how many lifeguards that you're going to have, what's, what's going to be the surrounding of the pool system. Obviously, I'm sure you're gonna have some technical security fencing, hours of operation, security on-site for all of your different areas. Kids break into the pool in the evening, somebody gets hurt. So you have E M Ts, understaffing pattern, lifeguards, security. So that breakdown in addition to everything else, I only saw an 89 number.
Sure, that was 89 new employees.
New employees, but so we can just get a breakdown, a breakdown of that. If you can plan to talk about any potential odors that'll come up, obviously, I'm sure you haven't seen it, but I'm sure you're addressing if there's any asbestos in these older buildings. I'd like for you to talk a lot more about the blasting, and what that is gonna look like, and the impact that it's gonna have, how long it's gonna go for, that, how the impact it's gonna be at the community. There are bald eagles in that area too, so among, I'm sure there's other wildlife and et cetera that also has to be considered. So I'm sure the public, as well as the board, would like to know about that. Just talking about, again, how large the pool is and how that's going to be navigated around. I do, you said to get the pedestrian crossing signs, that's also a big thing. People cross right now, and God bless, there's no accidents there, but. I do think a traffic study is important from there, talk more about the mountain coaster, and mini-golf, trash as well, and how that's going to work, where the, where the receptacles are going to be, the larger receptacles, how often it's gonna be taken away, where it's gonna go, just the whole process around that. The, any potential noise, to also have what the exact lighting system's going to be. Everything should be pointed down, obviously, away from any neighbors or road or et cetera, but certainly to talk about that. Also, having the plan to have upkeep and maintenance on, obviously, everything. If something breaks down, if this mountain coaster fails or doesn't do, that it doesn't now sit here for 100 years, that there's going to be a plan to remove anything that then is no longer in existence. I do think you need to lay out what the traffic flow is going to be for the public hearing, as well as the parking and what that's going to look like. Talk a little bit about any landscaping that you're going to be doing, signage. If there are any neighbors that'll be impacted, I mean, I know the Brook Road that goes up to there, so there'll be some kind of at least impact potentially of car, or maybe it's not. But certainly talking about any impact that'll have on not only neighbors that are right around, but also are in close proximity to that, of that impact. That is what I have.
Just so I can clarify, Jeff, these are things you're asking us to speak on at the meeting?
At the public hearing. Yeah.
All right, no problem.
Jim, do you have anything from the town that you can see, or?
Basically, I got a call about going out to the site at Kitatini and checking the RVs that you have by the river. So I went out and I took a photo of the RVs, and I was set up, they're all on blocks. We wanted it for the 50-year, 100-year floods, which for some reason, we seem to have in one year. But in any case, when I looked underneath the RVs, I took photos of, the wheels are still attached the way it was supposed to be. All your skirting is easily removed, so within a 24-hour period, you could remove the RVs without a problem, and I can see that everything was well-maintained. They were hooked up to sewer systems, so everything looked good. The electric was modernized in 2020 in that area, so I'll pass this up to the board. If you can take a look at this, and I don't know if you wanna meet with Ken or.
I see it already, maybe the rest of the board can see it, then we can give it to Ken.
The only thing I wanna say, I don't know if you really brought that out, but you were basically changing your business model a little bit. You know, in the past, we've had a lot of individual, younger people come up to use the campsites and campgrounds. But you seem to be going towards more of a family-oriented business. And when I was there doing these observations, I noticed a bunch of families in the area using that facility. So just from observing that, it looks like you're changing your client. I don't know if you wanna speak to that, or anything to that.
Rockwell, very general manager, Kitatini. That is our model, is to, you know, in the past of Kitatini, there was, you know, a lot of, you know, loud music, you know, guests that are there to pretty much party. I'm not gonna say that they're not there today, but it's extremely diminished over the past year to more of a family-oriented campground. And that's what we're trying to get to, you know, with this plan, is become more family-friendly. You know, and to really talk about the capacity of the sites. I mean, if our site capacity is 10 today, as it is from the past, it's gonna be 10 when this plan is completed. And it could be in a model, or would it be in a tent? So the same number of people will be attending and be able to stay at our campsites. We will give you the breakdown of all the. We will give you the breakdown of all the, which sites will have RV, which sites will be tents, which sites will be the park model RVs. And that'll all, we'll get to that very shortly. But, and also, you know, any site visits, when we do plan this, I mean, I personally will be there myself to give you guys a tour. Any questions you guys may have, I'm always on-site and available. So, thank you.
And for that, and that actually reminds me of a point, and also, Dan just said that as well. You certainly don't have to wait to get input from the community as well, whether it's sharing your telephone number, email address, having a website, question and answer, having yourself be very open to the community so that people come. I know there's some, like, Facebook groups that are local to Berryville and the area where people are on. Even getting on something like that, introducing yourself, having a way of people to contact you to disseminate information well beforehand so that you can address any specific issues that come up from the public, before the public hearing would be nice.
Would the town even hold the posting contact information that we provide for that purpose on its website? I just know that Facebook can sometimes get ugly.
Yeah, I'm not involved stuff on Facebook. A lot of it's fake news.
Right.
Maybe when you update or we did.
The pictures?
Pictures and stuff like that, we could put like some contact information or something on there that's a little bit more professional than social media.
One other question, I think, I know we recorded this meeting. There's been a lot of discussion tonight. We want to make sure we address everything. Can we get a copy of that as quickly as possible?
Yeah, I'm sure that's not a problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. So again, I just want to, you know, this is our, our first of many meetings. You know, it is not a, a public hearing. It's basically, you know, usually how these meetings work, is a discussion between the client and the application and the board. Obviously, we, I, I personally appreciate all the public's time coming here tonight. It's great. You know, I, even if you can't make the public hearing or you have, you have questions, you can always email them to the secretary of the board, and we get, you know, we will look at them before the public hearing. And, you know, that helps everyone. You know, I, venting on Facebook or crying at Berryville is not a proactive approach to anything. Most of it's false, just like me owning the tree-cutting business. So I just, I just wanted to, you know, specifically thank the public for coming out tonight. It means a lot to the board. That's about it. We got, you know, you know, a long ways to go. People are putting their hands up after I said no public comment.
No, 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 no. Thanks, you're on stage.
If you get a, if the applicant gives you an email or something, if there are any questions, you can email the applicant or something.
To the applicant?
Yeah, no, the public wants it.
I think, I think we'll, you know, their letterhead or whatever, or something with their contact information will be on the stuff once they're on the material that we update on the town website. I think that's a professional approach rather.
All right. We'll, we'll provide that information as quickly as possible. We do want to hear anything and everything that's of concern that we can address.
Terrific.
Mr. Chair?
We want to reset, most reset, but do you have a date yet? Do you have any?
So I'd love to discuss availability. Do we have some dates for site visits?
I, I think, you know, perhaps on a weekend would be better, just because that at least, you know, that's the, that's high tide. You know, they're going to have a lot of volume. You know, I'd rather go, I'm, you know, that, and I'm just so busy with work.
Mr. Chair, I'm trying to ask a question. The UDC was served with paperwork that purportedly a final plan on the 25th, and that triggers the 45-day review period.
Um, Mr. Boyer, we've.
Okay, let me just finish the question.
But, but, but again, they were given some stuff because it was too large to ship. I personally took time out of my day and brought it up there. Because, you know, we're in Eldred, UPS doesn't really stop here a lot to pick up the package. I hand-delivered it up there. We, the rest of the paperwork was given today. We're considering today the time when they got 100% of their paperwork. I feel that's more than fair. And that's it. I'm not going to, I'm not, this isn't a debate. I'm not.
It's not a debate. I just want to finish the question.
There is no question, Mr. Boyer. We've, we're, I, it's been a good day. I don't want to get mad. All right, so we're going to recess the meeting.
Will the UDC get final plans ever? If you're going to revise this plan, when will the UDC get a final plan to review?
Mr. Boyer, you're a supervisor. Anybody knows how a public hearing works. Okay. So do I get a motion to recess the meeting?
Wow.
Until August, I'll make the motion. Thank you.